Welcome to Arizona Board of Appeals for the town of Webster. Today, date 16th, 124. We have on our... After today, one table matter and four scheduled matters. We have proof of legal application for all items here. Call for attendance?
Jim Spackenada.
Mr. Havel?
Hi. Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Spackenada?
Here again.
Mr. DeMarco?
Mr. Artis.
Here. Um, we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, pledge.
Mrs. Holland, one star.
All stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
There are two matters. Fifteen ninety-nine, Bridge Road. So this month, the applicant has requested to table this matter until the May fourteenth board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And additionally, item number two on our scheduled matters, Willow Lane accessory structure located at six seven one Willow Lane, is also being tabled until the May fourteenth, uh, zoning board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To our first day.
Alright, Colorado Drive Pool House addition located at two eighty-six Colorado Drive. Advocate Scott Macho was requesting very variance to allow a second accessory structure where only one is permitted, associated with the relocation and expansion of the existing treehouse. Located in six foot by six foot posts from its current location to the pool area on a two point zero acre parcel in the SBL number zero seventeen point ten dash one dash twenty-three located in an R three single family residential district under section three five zero dash thirty-six of the home in Webster.
How's it going? Good, are you? Good. Tell us a little bit about the project.
Sure. So I don't know if you're off the true. We got it right here. Yeah, so we have built a treehouse for our kids a couple years ago. It exists from, it's not getting used and a lot of them dropped that town and moved up to the floor and picked it up. It's a very nice treehouse.
Um...
I have a question. So the application said to remove the treehouse to the pool. And then they showed the three hundred and twelve feet of the trees. You're talking about a little bit more, just going through the plans and it just... I was struggling to follow what you're trying to do. I saw the picture of the treehouse, I was like, great. So this elevation here and I believe the hatched area is where the treehouse was and I see the covered area.
So I'm just gonna extend the plan over a bit, twenty-two over.
Okay.
Eighty-one back.
So it's not enlarging the enclosed area of the treehouse, it is just extending the roof line of the treehouse.
Yep.
Okay.
Close the roof.
Gotcha, okay. And then my other question. So... This plan, which... Yep. That one. Is this the roof framing plan, I'm assuming?
That's the deck. Have to do a deck because it's a fish tower.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And that fourteen foot, um, enclosed area is that concrete though?
No.
That's definitely as well. And then, unfortunately, I was not able to get out to your state. Do you already have, um...
Some sheds already on the property, is that correct?
There's one more.
There's one more? Okay. Um, looking at this, it looks like a crane shed and then... Where are we just? Looks like there's three.
Is that it? Yeah, the tree is on our head.
Sure.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Josh, it's considered accessory structure because of the area, because the treehouse or the shed size. But the other group is that it's a personalized property now, it considers it accessory structure.
Correct.
So as far as the clothes, it's not really...
Will you be any more on property than the rest right now?
Correct.
Just hoping it happens.
Obviously converting the treehouse to the banner with a... It's an extra.
Any questions?
I didn't get a chance to speak with you, but I did peek over the fence and look around.
Yeah.
Always will. I know there's a lot of trees there, it's just gonna be...
You're gonna take down any trees then?
No. No. There's no trees all around the pool.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm from the public, there's a...
Uh, has any comments? The board? Any comments from the board? Go ahead. Um... Alright, uh... Vote on, uh, the secret resolution. I have an option for a type Q of action under secret. Uh, pursuant to our section six one seven five, six one seven point five of the environmental code for Colorado Drive Pool House addition. Those in favor?
Aye.
And, um...
Findings? I'll say that it's not out of character with the treehouse that I'd be there, it's just relocated and moved forward. Um, it's not a detriment to any of the new properties where the pool is located. It's really not going to be even in the line of sight of any of the contingent properties. But it's not achieved by any other method. Um, the structures are be there, it's just finding another location for it. It's also necessary to, and I create the first physical or environmental. But it's going to be primarily open space with just the enclosed cabana area that's currently just an enclosed treehouse. And, um... It'll be in there as far as the neighbors consent. If no one has anything else to add to it, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow the special accessory structure of a pool house slash cabin associated with the relocation of the existing treehouse and move to, um, up against the pool with additional square footage added on a two point oh acre parcel with SBL number zero seven eight point one zero dash one dash two three located in an R three single family residential district.
Aye.
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 You have your variance? I'm gonna try and run through this. It's been asked.
I've seen anything this time.
Um, you have your variance, you have, uh, six months to obtain all permits and construction complete, uh, on year. One year? So one year, sorry, one year. Uh, so you're like missing something.
Building permit?
What's that?
Building permit.
Oh, okay, you will need a theater building permit. Alright?
Okay.
Good luck in moving to the pool house.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
The variance. Okay, so Willow Lane is tabled, so Geller Circle?
Yep.
Geller Circle privacy fence located at five forty-one Geller Circle. Advocate Nathan Corr is requesting a very variance to allow a two foot panel privacy fence on the lot line where fifteen plus setback is required, associated with the installation of approximately forty-seven million feet of privacy fence on a two point five zero acre parcel with SBL number zero seven eight point one two dash two dash three located in an R three single family residential district under section three five zero dash seventy-nine of the home in Webster.
How's it going?
Good, I am.
Good.
So, Nick, I'm just trying to, uh, ask you. I wanted to bring up a product. Yes, we're looking to build a privacy fence on the rear of our, uh, our property. We're gonna make, yeah, you can see down there as well. Eventually we want to, uh, enclose these hard yards so that's how they go next to the field fence. Stay down there, but it's a little piece. Uh, we're requesting additional height on the property line. Do you have any differences between our property and your property? Uh, I thought that your property could be a little more, your property...
Higher.
Second, uh, the access, I'd say, that will be, uh, possible for us. But that's taking all our...
I have a picture, this is a back picture. Right there shows, um, what our backyard looks like in August of last year. Um, basically, our backyard here has cleared out, um, those trees and brush stuff on his property. Um, so I included a few different pictures that show different trailers, different trucks that are parked back there. Um, currently, right now, um, part of us has actually taken it down, so we went and worked those, more brush. But basically, we have the different trucks and trailers coming in and out, um, that happens almost daily. And then the, um, others were putting it in storage there. Um, and the height difference is kind of why we're looking for the fence, um, to be able to, I was in our backyard, be able to control, um, our area and that.
Do you have pine trees there, trees on the back?
I have pine trees.
A lot of shade and, uh, top herbivores. All right.
Do I reveal your structure versus?
But let us only do, um, that kind of area of our property contains a lot of water as well, um, just for the game and the low tree. Um, so that's not a concern at all, we're trying to plan on some things, um, to be able to maintain. So if I were looking to have fence, um, also to looking for, uh, like a permanent solution all year round and then, um... So like I mentioned previously, the owner of mine has taken down part of his fence. Um, unfortunately, also a part of his fence, um, down since last year. So paying to, um, gain, for something, be able to, you know, enroll in it, so, um, one of these, that is also something that, um, probably...
I know you've already mentioned your wife, I believe you mentioned your wife's name, you could just mention your name.
Yeah, my name is Kristen, I'm from Atlanta, I'm not saying hello.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this application?
Do you think the situation with the neighbors is causing this effect?
I would watch your next neighbor to pay for the, the fence. We don't have that control.
You know, Josh, you wanna give...
Oh, it's kind of killing with the information to prepare.
Sure.
As the property owner at nine forty-one has issued a special use permit many years ago for a major home occupation. Um, and within the past, I'd say, eight or nine months or so, the town began receiving complaints from the joint neighbors based upon the fill activity and the loss of vegetation that was once there. Um, so we do have an active open violation of the property associated with the storage of the recreational vehicles. And we are going to be exploring, um, bringing the owner of nine forty-one gravel road back in for this board to re-review, um, the special permit and the conditions that were proposed after twenty eleven, uh, which did require that all of the equipment associated with the business be stored in the numerous outbuildings that are on the property. So it, it was heard earlier this month in court. It was adjourned to next month because the owner indicated they...
Repart everything to a own confined location.
Um, but again, we are exploring the, um, original conditions imposed on own occupation permit and bringing it back to the board next month for further consideration. There wasn't any, um, co-vision with respect to the striking of the vegetation? Uh, no, there were no co-visions associated with that.
So leaving subsequent...
A... Term with respect to the joint property, even if it comes into compliance, the visual that we're seeing now up on the screen remains.
And trust, the heavy equipment that's there. I understand you should only park the inside of your park, not on property.
Correct. While the selling of that individual, uh, case of murder was that he was screened. He had on his body, by the screen, this bomb.
That was there, there was a six foot fence. Um, he had screened from most of the neighbors. I don't know that we ever received noise complaints, um, which... But, but all of their screening, you push them to me, the business...
There was quite a bit of that.
Yeah, it was, it was a thick... It was a fence, it was a very intense...
Who was the, uh, vegetation agent?
Five.
Um, so, you know, the last picture that I included, that was taken down last summer, at the end of August. Um, there have been a lot of trees that have fallen as well that have been down the property line. Um, in the last, I think, year or so, there have been three major trees that have fallen. One is falling, it's a pine shed. One is falling, it's a brush, um, neighbor's property, it fell, and one actually fell on his property. And a tree that are raised on the property lines. Those are three big ones, and then all that brush, um, from that one, sure, I think we're about to fall.
It's a raised corner. Spot on the ground, that's where it used to be, a screen a little bit of as well. I don't have so much...
Um, and then, yeah, as far as, like, I don't, I guess, um, as far as the complaint, I have plenty of, um, in the past. Um, I think there's a lot of other things with the special use permit, like, I know there's been timing that it always can start at eight to seven thirty in the morning, um, I documented it starting beforehand, but, yeah, for the sake of, I guess, just being today as a separate issue. But, um, I guess we're just gonna be trying to look at, um, from a digital perspective right now, that there definitely are some other leaks that, um, can be frustrating at times.
It's a hard part. Without a fence, there ain't anything.
Friends, our house.
Yeah, um, I waited at nine thirty at night, um, also, um, pretty early in the morning. Um, also, trucks that are parked there, I mean, I'm not sure, um, it started, you know, today, there was a truck that, parked back there today. We lost a trailer parked back there today. Um, unfortunately, it seems like we just are always kind of coming and going, um, so...
Yeah. Can you, I'm not as well, I'm, uh... Neighbors, uh, on one hand, a ten foot fence is a big fence, but there's, there's a twenty-four, thirty inch height difference between your property and the neighbor's property. Um, but their special use variance, um, is definitely a component of this, right? They weren't using that for special use home occupancy variance, um, they wouldn't have the trucks there, they wouldn't have all that, uh, traffic in and out. And if I was you, I'd be standing in your situation as well, um, on another hand, it's, uh... It's not, it's not your call. Just then, that following, uh, the, these special use, um...
That is...
Eight four nine.
Yeah, that's a, that's a couple.
I would, back there again today, I walked the property line between five forty-one Geller and a couple of other parcels. And so, you know, I would back there to get, to... Just to get, uh, a height of mind. Um, and the difference between the grade of the property at five forty-one Geller and the neighbor on gravel is at least two feet. And for a good portion of it, it's thirty-six inches, thirty-five to thirty-seven inches. And even if the equipment goes away, the lot has been filled with a bunch of construction debris and a bunch of garbage and asphalt, scrapings, roads and concrete, baylon, uh, pylons and I don't think there's... Anything that's gonna happen from the perspective of your property where it's going to make it view any better than the fence. And while when I read the information initially... A ten foot fence is obviously quite tall. Um, when I stood there, I don't know if ten foot fence is quite tall enough, but certainly... It'll, it'll buffer the headlights from the vehicles, it'll buffer the view. They'll at least not see all of the garbage that right now is right at level with the deck. So if you sit up there a couple of hours, you're looking at basically... City next to the city, don't you think? There's just a lot of construction debris, old tires and, um, so, separate from even the... It's, um... I think the fence is the only thing that's gonna scrape it at this point in time. Nothing will grow there to plant it, to shield it. Between the water that is now already from the parents or just the impervious surface that's behind them.
What's, what style fence are you proposing?
Uh, wood.
Same.
I'll take that.
Yeah, yours, yeah. It's, it's a sad situation, but I do feel certain where, um, there's a... And I, I do agree that a fence would help, a ten foot fence, like you say, it will help the roof, uh, the, uh, associated, the tops of some... Vehicles and things. But I do agree that the fence is probably the solution to a situation.
Questions from the board? Anybody from the public, uh, okay. Got, I got.
Ford?
Yep, please.
My name is Oliver, I'm a juror, I would like to refer to them, I invite all the members to the circle to investigate the best view of this night here. Uh, the one thing I would dispute is that, um, it's only been last eight or nine months, like this has come up. I personally have been to town multiple times over a decade, I'm within ninety. Um, so I would feel a lot, so I can give you a couple of stories of what inspired it, and, you know, twenty...
About the year's spend. Um, and he, uh, I know he was given special use permit, he might have every single twenty of that. Um, I understand that right now he moved his vehicles, but that was today in October. And I have zero confidence that I could comply with that once everybody comes in on, because that has been the case every single time. So, you know, I have the privilege of reading that as well. Um, I'm really very legal, I think optimism is a ratio as far as, um, any negative can be put, because I'm real, real legal. So my property right now is...
Your property that had been treated?
Yes, so, yeah, my property, um, I mean, can bring this up, like, you know, that's really not necessarily...
No, I was, I was trying to place your location.
Yeah, I, I was the one who was going with deciding that fence damage because he was allowed, um...
Retract away his still permit and not be just complying with that still permit.
And the trees are dying and I'm still a truck, right? So right now, I'm trying to rebuild my property, but he's supposed to take down these trees, which he didn't.
And there are trees that...
Right, and I'm sure you didn't have some, or some, right? And then the tree that's upset. So anyway, my point was that, um, I think geographic speaking, I'm the only attached person, investigation and not enclosure. You know, because we, we both have suffered enough, um, and just like Alex, I have, I wish we had a useful channel, right? Where, because that's one way I can communicate videos, like, to the town, the six o'clock in the morning, you know, dump trucks, dump their things, um... Uh, dipping, you know, the, the, the box cats, the front doors, even dumping, it's, it's terrible. So out of all, what I would assume, the sad is that it's only been last eight or nine months, I would say it's been last eight or nine months, uh, with the arrival of the new, uh, town road enforcement, um, General Garberri, um, that has been even done a lot up until this point. I can tell you, I've been a parent of the attacks myself, multiple neighbors in our neighborhood came to town and helped us with that. But I totally endorse, endorse, endorse. Um, and I'm a person, I'm a supporter of that. Are you, you have any other questions?
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, I never visit you properly, um, when you look at the properties, it is, um, Yeah.
Sorry.
You're the six house in there?
Six, go ahead, um, I, I trust Holden, you talk about real estate stuff, so. I came here tonight to speak against the property side.
Nothing I knew about was what was listed here.
And I guess that, um, I was one. I had a lot of a neighbor and, uh, a neighbor at one point, and I was very pleased with his response. I appreciate. Yeah, I have changed my episode.
All right, do you mind telling us why?
Oh, um, I would rather see the fifteen percent back, whatever you guys want, please, or is that, 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 that some regulations occur?
Thank you. Uh, may I believe you?
I'm not familiar. I know nothing about, my name is Jan, I'm a truck, um, I know nothing at all about this particular property, like, if someone in the board just said, let, we have this wreck of a property that's future hearing with the enjoyment of neighbors, why is, uh, in common with the town, the person who's made the mess to put a present with a fence rather than a young couple, you know, which has bought a house, sort of thing?
Just a question.
Yeah, I mean, this is all coming to light, uh, for, I know for myself, and I believe for the rest of the board, as recently we're, we're working through it at this point.
I mean, if you're gonna make him put a fence on.
Well, you know, that, that would be my preference, I think I stated it earlier, about funds, like, that, 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 they, uh, pay to, to sell a fence for something that he's doing, but unfortunately, there's an application not in front of us, this evening, we're, we're only gonna act.
I, the only, my only issue. My issue with this particular problem is, uh, you know. And it's like, I apologize for my.
So I think the property, you know, all you would need is to be created for coverage. So that's just one thing I just wanted to point out, which is, um, that current fence that you see, that's not even on the property line. Um, that's actually, um, the fence that you put up is not on the property line, only that one piece that's angled that way. But back of that, um, in the, I guess, the part closer to his property, that's more close to our arch or property line. And so the original fence was, the fence that was set back from the property line. So if we were going to try and put one and then fifteen feet in, we're going to be going potentially across our pool. It could be even lower, um, elevation. So that's just, I just wanted to point that out, um, just because it's a little hard to tell from pictures, but I completely understand, you know, people's concerns and whatnot. But I just wanted to make sure I have the context for how looking for it on property line.
Um, do you have any other questions?
Uh, soon enough.
Any other questions?
Um.
I can, uh, call, um, the, 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 um, for a, uh, for a. They asked for a type two action under secret pursuant to NYCRR section six point seven point five.
For. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, there you go. Nobody.
Okay. Pretty good. Yes, I will throw out one additional comment or suggestion to the board as, uh, as we think about moving forward. Um, because of the situation, um, with the neighbor, um.
I'm, I understand, I understand.
For the fence, um, I s- I suggest or like more to consider, um, maybe putting a, uh, duration on the, the limitation of the fence.
During the duration of the fence?
Even being out there, uh, a, which I believe is what you've mentioned that you were planning on building. Uh, typically has a fifteen plus or minus year, um, lifespan. Um, it's. Once that fence, um, rots out, that disparity ends up going away, um, and. Maybe the use of the. Changing in the, uh, special use, uh. In a particular area anymore, that type of fence isn't necessary. But if it is, then another variance could be, uh, sought at that point. But I'm almost wondering, do we put a fifteen year, um, variance itself?
Otherwise it's indefinitely.
So what should I be looking at the rest of twenty minutes longer?
There's precedent.
I was trying to find something specifically in the state, but, you know, typically, um. For other things, um. There's covenants that can be, you know, affirmative or restrictive, with the easement, um, which.
I'm not sure whether we would be afforded to, um.
Covenant, there would be a time limit on it, um. Can't, and they do exist, but Josh, I don't know, do you, I've never, I've. I haven't had that issue come up. You know, I. In the context of the potential prosecution, permit, what goes on with that property, there may come a time, point in time, when the fence is needed. The, uh, the current land, we're, we're agree to that, I don't think it's really prohibitive, but I can't, I'm just looking at it now, and I can't, I can't find anything.
Yeah, I, I personally am aware or haven't experienced anything like that.
Will residents establish a time limit, or if there was indeed to reconstruct the fence, they would need to, yeah, they would need to come back from the board. Just so the board can revisit the situation, residents establish a time limit.
I could be more prone to, to be agreeable to that. My forward thinking is if for fifteen to twenty years, the fence is no longer viable and needs to be replaced. If the tenth fence is expensive, then twenty years from now, it's going to be even more cost prohibitive. If there's no longer a need for it, you can't be imagining that the homeowner would want to replace it if, if there was no longer a need to block. And it's like, it just kill itself.
The good news is that Don will be here.
Well, I'm, I hope I am. Well, we want that, yes. Is there?
I don't know if the board has considered, and I don't, I don't know if the proposal, uh, includes. That wraps around and ends at two point as opposed to a, you know, some buffer, more of a buffer than, than a fence per se.
I, I'd say.
There's a fence that wraps all the way around the pool. Is this contemplating just a kind of a buffer to?
Be rough, well, be forward of that. Forward, so that fence, so the one fence is actually back here.
So just, just on that one?
What could be shared with Josh?
Actually, I'd say it's about five, six feet. Property line, um.
I believe it was, yeah, it's at least five feet. And I'll also mention that the property was nine forty one grabbing, um, basically applied for, was issued a permit to re-. Make the existing fence to the property line, so it doesn't really do too much. That's to, you know, screen the view, but.
One of the things that I also. And I was, which are trying and, uh, but every while, so I think, um, we'll need to, we need, obviously, the cost, um, that we don't necessarily have to have today. But I think us paying forward because we know that we need twenty foot fence, um, to get a leak to that area, people will go better with, um, just be ready to stay on that.
It's gonna be natural, it's gonna be natural, you know, can you understand it?
Yeah, um, we don't know exactly what others say, but is there any, any other staying on the table?
I hear we were just trying to look for these, but I mean, if there's something that you guys suggest, um, like refine, theoretically, we're, we're more just looking for the privacy line out. So there's, um, staying and paying, but not, uh, you mean, the market line, we're very much fine with it, so.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I brought it back to the board, sorry for that.
Uh, like I said, he typically runs with the land and it's there for all time to come.
Do you want to respect the timeframe for it?
Is. My original thought was.
The fence is driving out, uh, the closure.
Oh, another ten foot fence, otherwise.
Well, because, yeah, they would have to get enough of a permit to replace the fence, but if there's, I don't know, a technical note, we would have to. You know, it's certainly adequate to the board before it, it higher than allowable.
But it's, uh, we've, we've done that, I think, with a couple of sheds over the years, that just, you know, the first time to replace, the second time, and they can be able to afford to.
Once, um, sections degrade.
Sure, sure.
Are you planning on fixing the. Um, rather than paying, so, well, falling down and replacing.
I will say.
Would be shocked, especially with the one fence.
They typically do the rain.
Wholesale, but if you, you know, if you look at your neighbor's fence.
Body in multiple sections that is falling out in multiple sections, what do you do on the panel?
Like here, but you're never going to be able to catch up, uh, from that. Your post are going to.
It's to the post itself, you're not going to rock.
Yeah, I think he's just asking, uh, so like if the panel falls down, are you going to have to come back?
No, no, absolutely not. Yeah, if you have a problem with the panel.
And that's why you're trying to understand.
Yep. Yeah.
When it comes time to replace the, the integrity of the fence, because it's, uh, it's.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah.
No, we have not.
I don't even know how to. Um.
Side, uh, of character with neighborhood, there was a fence back there, but the fence was moved on. Wasn't replacing the fence that was on the other owner's property, but it's taller.
Nope.
It was under sign, everybody accepts the neighbor five forty five who's in favor of it.
Correct.
Um, so as far as the detriment to nearby properties, um, they're not a detriment. Yeah, the one end of it, it's connected to charity fence, that's the gap or something else is deep lot, it's some. Because I've got a main street and a couple of subdivisions, there's some.
Been a walking lot lines in there. Um, as far as achievable by any other method, I. Rearview is going to improve quickly enough that there's any other method besides the fence to block the. Be dealing with. Um, as far as envir- adverse environmental or physical impacts to the site or to the neighborhood, I think this is actually remedying. An adverse environmental impact that was created by a situation done by a neighbor to the rear. But the fence is not, my opinion is certainly not going to impact, um, the water table or where the water's moving. It's really not going to impact any. Um, I, in this case, I think it's not self-created because you would not need the fence if it weren't for the difficulty that was created by someone else behind you. And this will be a desirable change in that it's going to, it at least hide the view of the dome. Does someone else want to turn the variance, or I feel like I'm analyzing them. But if not, I will make a motion to raise a very, very, for privacy fence located on the lot line.
Five forty one, Del Roserol, party of four and seven.
Ten foot tall privacy fence on the lot line. Approximately thirty seven linear feet of fencing on parcel number zero seven eight point one two dash two dash three. Located in an R three single family residential district.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, you have your variance for, uh, ten foot tall fence. Include the timeline in that. Yep, so we, we are going to condition it, um, for life of the fence, uh, variance, uh, be valid for the life of the fence. Um, once the fence rots out, variance is, uh, no longer applicable, and if you need a ten foot fence again, you're going to have to reapply.
Well, all right.
Well, it would do an extension.
Well, either way, we need to.
Situation, so, um, you have one year complete project, um, and a building permit to do so. Um, and good luck.
He goes forward with the draw.
I'll, yeah, and, and, uh, and we'll comply with the.
He's complying with the drawing that was submitted as part of the, uh, application. Thank you, good luck, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, he has, um, eleven seventy eight Jackson Heights, uh, Drive.
All right, Jackson Heights Drive, living room addition, located at five seventy eight Jackson Heights Drive. It's done to the neighborhood, we are requesting very clear means to allow reverse step back unless the loads required associated with construction.
They put seven seven. Two dash three point two located in an R three second, you have to.
No.
Tell us a little bit about the project.
My parents own this addition, um, thirty eight, asking for thirty eight, over your step back for a living room addition, backs up to our commercial district. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Questions from the board?
Just for argument's sake.
There's currently a deck there, right?
Yes, there's currently a deck there. Actually, both fit inside of the footprint of the existing deck, so will not be any.
Was there a variance?
Issue for that deck?
Anybody can talk, whether that's a man or.
Receives a hundred percent or.
I think that's allowed.
Twenty, yeah, twenty percent.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, the facts on the.
Not that the limelight property counts, but because of where the fence is with limelight and the buffer space, it's not going to look like it's really too close to the lot line. It's not going to place, uh, place it all.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else in the board, any other questions, comments?
Yep. Anybody from the public, any questions or comments?
No.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, um. Would make a motion for a type two double action under secret pursuant to NYC's section six point seven point five, the environmental code. For the Jackson Heights, um, eleven seventy eight Jackson Heights Drive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, yep. Let's see. Very of variance standards, anybody want to give those a shot? Um, I'd say this area, uh, this request is not necessarily out of character.
Uh, it goes back up against the, uh, commercial, uh, site, and the house is set far enough back, and, uh, this will not be, uh, visible from, uh.
Uh, street. There's not really going to be a, there's not going to be a detriment to any of the nearby properties, uh, because of the commercial district. And then the, uh, other residential districts are real, uh, properties are actually set forward of this, this property. Um, benefit is not achievable by any other method other than, uh, chopping down a, uh, fairly substantial, um, actually a very beautiful tree, um, last time I was out there.
There's no adverse physical or.
Environmental impacts, actually, it's less of an environmental impact, like not removing, um, the tree, um, it's not really going to affect any, the waterways or anything else in the area. Um, difficulty is, um, not self-created, um, due to the way that the property is and, um, where the tree is located. And the way the house is situated. Uh, this won't be a, um, this will be a desirable change to, to the house, in square footage and, um, um, value of property and to the residents. Um, so there's, uh, not a significant, uh, impact.
No objection to any new progress.
No objection to any new progress. Appreciate it. Um, motion for, uh, variance to, uh, Jackson Heights Drive, uh, living room addition, located at, uh, eleven seventy eight Jackson Heights. Uh, Drive, uh, which means, uh, Maggie, uh, area variance to allow a rear step back unless there is required associated with construction of a one hundred and ninety six square. Living room addition on a, uh, point seven seven acre parcel having SBL number zero eight zero point one three dash two dash three point two. Located in an R three single family residential, uh, district under section three five zero dash two of the code title of website.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You have, uh, you have your area variance, you have, uh, one year of completion, uh, you have to obtain building code, uh, or building permit. Um, and at times be able to, to do the construction, um, so good luck. Thanks, everybody.
All right, so we have the main street with names.
Aye.
All right, first question, do you have seven seven eight five? All right, um, it's seven seven eight five. Um, James McHulring, who is the compliance officer.
Members of the zoning board, appeals to date, I received legal complaints regarding the chickens, act date seven seven eight five, which were granted a special use to it by this.
Please accept this report as my favorable recommendation for residents to maintain a special use permit for the remainder of the five year period.
Anthony, that was, that was my first fourth, fourth, I mean.
This is about a year already.
Yeah.
Josh, did you say? Twist that? Six, seven?
Yes, so the original approval states that, uh, it was a maximum of six hens. Requires a one year evaluation of the April twenty twenty four, is only working, if you possibly extend the special. And allowing. That was the language of the original. Are you requesting more hens at this point?
I was hoping to move up to ten hens.
Um, so we got six, uh, just here. Action.
How?
How are you going to, I don't question about eleven because you have to purchase.
Six.
So I thought it was like.
Uh, and on practice.
I still.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I thought it was.
You know, proportionally, the stores that sell it.
Well, I haven't tried to purchase from, uh, was it, that is, uh.
It's Country Max.
Country Max, thank you, but I thought they were six as well, but I could be wrong.
No, it's a dozen.
How much is your house?
It's the lot is.
And where is the coop on the, on the lot itself?
Um, yeah, sure. Um, you got a garage and it's. It's actually got a back wall, the garage.
Yeah, you can't see it from the road.
Oh, you can't. So it's, it's a long, narrow, not really narrow, but it's a long line.
Just straight back.
Yep.
This, this picture, and it's almost the. Width of the garage there, so it's just right behind what we see.
So be, is it directly behind, or is it?
To the south of the garage, based on the area, but I have the.
Yes.
So is it's next to the garage or behind the garage?
No.
So would you need? If, if you were to buy another six chairs.
It's the chicken coop.
Yeah, it was, um, it's a popular design. More than twelve, but they recommend like, uh, eight to fourteen even.
Okay.
So.
I think there's no neighbors. It's like that, and then there's one.
Right. You give him back again, you're out or no? Here's my suggestion.
Yep.
If you're going to leave it the way it is, and then, and that's the end of the review, if the board is comfortable with increasing the number. In exchange, have him back another time to see whether the numbers affect the board's concerns.
That's fair.
Free and stable.
What's up?
I'm free and stable.
I'm good, I'm good with, uh. Right, that would get you to the, to the six purchases, five at one card, that you said, right?
Yep.
Doesn't?
For this or?
You're changing the original. I just amend it, make a motion to amend it and put it out another year.
I'll make a motion to amend the, um, variance, uh, granted at eight seven seven Eagle Drive, SPL zero seven eight point one one dash one dash two eight, to, uh, from allowing six hens to a maximum of twelve hens. This property is located in R three, single-family residential district, um, we ask to come back in one year or a follow-up to see how, by your neighbors. But, um, a dozen hens during the, the, uh, angling song.
Isn't that a point in time, we can extend it for five years, is that?
Right.
Okay.
Um, do I have a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay, all those in favor? See you in one year.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I.
So you have the approval of this, so I will make a motion. All right, I will make a motion to, uh, twelve, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four members?
So Dan and I were not present, so I have three other votes.
Well, those other three have been there.
These are outstanding, isn't someone February? All right, do you have this here, is David Adam this here, and Rich?
Yeah, so I wasn't there.
No, you were here too.
Well, I was.
Okay.
People from the large.
Three people.
Oh, my fault, my fault, I've been in tomorrow, February, January.
All right, let's come on, after we're airing thirteen, I don't know. Dan, myself, and James, someone okay with it. I'll make a motion to approve the February thirteenth minutes.
Sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the January sixteenth minutes, I'll make a motion to approve those.
You have to remember that, remember that.
I do have the right numbers, yes.
Detective?
All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean it. Uh, with that, I conclude the, uh, uh, there's an April sixteenth, um, zoning board appeals for the town of West. Thank you, everybody.